We're live.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the August 12th, 2024 meeting of the University City, City Council meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Clay.
President.
Councilmember Timman.
President.
Councilmember McMahon.
Here.
Councilmember Hales.
Here.
Councilmember Fuller.
Here.
Councilmember Smotherson.
Here.
Mayor Crowe.
Here. Before you have the agenda during the study session, no one made any change, requested any changes. Are there any changes at this time? Hearing now, may we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Timman. Is there a discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, the ayes have, we have no proclamations. You have before you the July 8th, 2024 study session minutes for solid waste rates. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. McMahon, seconded by Mr. Fuller. Is there a discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, the ayes have, you have before the July 8th, 2024 regular minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. McMahon, seconded by Mr. Hales. Is there a discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, the ayes have, you have before the July 30th, 2024 special meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. McMahon, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hales. Is there a discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, the ayes have it. There are no appointments, there are no swearings in. This will be our first section of citizen participation. For those of you who are joining us this evening, there are sign up seats over by the door. When you come to the microphone, please give your name and address. If you're speaking on an agenda item, we will call you at that time. If you're speaking on a non-agenda item, you can speak at this time and you are limited to five minutes. The first request to speak this evening is Mr. Gerald Tears.
Thank you. Gerald Tears, 7345 Chamberlain. At a recent council meeting, I referred to a one quarter percent sales tax that was available to certain cities in Missouri, suggesting it might be used to pay for the annex debt. I was not sufficiently clear in my comments, leading to some confusion. The taxing authorization I was referring to is established in revised statutes of Missouri, RSMO, Section 94.850, and it is not pre-allocated to any specific use. The text of RSMO 94.850 is as follows. Any city, town, or village located within a county of the first classification, having a charter form of government and having a population of 900,000 or more inhabitants, may by a vote of its governing body impose a sales tax in the amount of one eighth of, excuse me, one eighth of one percent or one fourth of one percent on the receipts from the sale at retail of all tangible personal property and taxable services at retail within the city, town, or village. Obviously, the conditions apply to St. Louis County, and we are located in St. Louis County. Therefore, the taxing authority allows you to impose such a tax. There's the usual added requirement to put the tax to a vote, and I believe there's a requirement elsewhere to share 12.5% of the receipts with other pool cities, which is not terribly onerous, I don't think. The existing parks, fire, et cetera taxes are authorized under different sections of RSMO and are independent of this section. Therefore, they do not interfere with Section 94.850. University has not, city has not imposed the sales tax. No mention of the sales tax is made in the budget. Apparently, there's been no need seen for enacting the tax. I mentioned it to Mr. Mulligan, he appeared to agree with me. Well, now we have an obvious need. We have the certificates of participation, excuse me, certificates of participation issued for the police station project, and the annual budget needed to do that is substantial. Clearly, the sales tax could be a significant help, and it should be easier now to show a need for this sales tax to the voters than for some other taxes. If available, as all the information I can find suggests that it is, this appears to be an ideal way to help pay off the annex debt. Since it is a general revenue tax, not pre-allocated, it's more flexible in application than any of the other auxiliary sales taxes now imposed or proposed. If proposed and passed, it would likely be appropriate for the city to specifically allocate the income for the tax to the COP retirement for the duration of the COPs. That would be up, obviously, to your discretion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next request to speak is Mr. Tom Sullivan.
Tom Sullivan, 751 Syracuse. There are still some streetlights out in the city. In particular, there are at least two lights out in the city's number four parking lot behind where Cicero's used to be. One is by Kingsland and has been out for over a year. It's pretty bad when a city cannot even keep the streetlights lit in your own parking lot. There's another streetlight nearby that needs to be replaced. It's in the alley between Syracuse and Kingsland, near Loop North. It goes off and on. It's by a building where Washington U co-ed was sexually assaulted and badly beaten. She nearly died. Not long ago, there were three loud gunshots in the alley. There's another streetlight out on Cabin E by Westgate. Another is out at Kingsland and Olive. Another on Ferguson by Etzel. Another is out on Julian by Ferguson. There are two streetlights out on Midland. One is just north of Vernon, one is north of Olive. Also, there's a 10-foot section of the south sidewalk missing on Loop North by Heeman. It's been needed to be repaired for a long time. By the way, the street that runs parallel to Loop North, north of Loop North, has signs on it calling it Loop North. It is not. Two parallel streets will not have the same name. According to Google Maps, the street north of Loop North is not Loop North. St. Louis County is currently resurfacing Kingsland. That includes replacing sidewalks and curbs. It's too bad this wasn't done with street resurfacing by University City. In Loop North, the streets were resurfaced without the sidewalks and curbs being improved. On my street, there are 50 different places where the curb is missing, crumbling, or cracked. Sometimes it's a few inches, sometimes a few feet. Neighboring streets have the same problem, though it doesn't seem as bad. The resurfacing should have not been done until the sidewalks and curbs were first restored, just like the county does. While Kingsland is being done, this city might want to make some related improvements. The interest to the number four parking lot from Kingsland is still a mess. Also, there used to be shrubs along the Kingsland side, but they mostly died and were not replaced. The Kingsland medium has been neglected for years and is puzzling why. At the north end, some puny trees were planted and they have mostly died. They need to be removed. Kingsland should be a showcase street. Instead, it has been a mess from one end to the other. The plan for the third ward revitalization is supposed to be released next week. There are many third ward residents looking forward to the promised improvements to their homes and their neighborhood. The consultant hired to work on this has thrown out numerous ideas, but they don't all seem very realistic. It has now been nearly two years since Costco opened. The third ward improvements were to be part of the unique plan. But so far, there have been no improvement projects completed and no improvement projects planned. You could be dealing with some angry residents. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you. Our next request to speak is Larry Williams. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. You're, on the budget, I apologize. I see that now. I apologize. Like, sorry about that. Thank you. Thank you for correcting my error. I apologize. Let's see, I believe then, Mr. Welch.
Hello and good evening to all of you. My name is Theo Welch. I live at 1099 Pennsylvania Avenue. My wife and I are brand new homeowners in University City. And similar to Tom, I was here today to talk about some street safety issues that we had near our new home. We really like the spot where we live, also in the city's third ward. But within the first month that we were there, we had an incident happen where, of course, on my own fault, I forgot to lock the doors in my car, but we ended up having somebody rifle through it. I've been in St. Louis, not originally, but long enough to know not to keep things in my car. So nothing was lost, and I was happy to actually find that the University City Police Department was very, very responsive to our neighbor's call about it because they woke us up and informed us. But it did highlight something that we noticed immediately when we purchased our new home, that the corner at Etzel and Arcadia has not a missing streetlight, one that needs there, but is down, laying across one of our neighbor's yards and has become nearly pitch black at night without that light there. We've put a couple bulbs on the outside of our own home, but I'm here talking to the city council because I'm concerned about our neighbors as well. So I believe that I found the proper channels to make these type of requests, and I can see that they're a topic everyone's interested in. So I hope today to bring some of this to your attention to show that, just like Tom was saying, a lot of us residents do seem to be concerned about the safety of our streets at night especially. Additionally, we've noticed, and so has University City Police Department, noticed that that intersection at Etzel and Pennsylvania is a hotspot for speeding cars and blown stop signs. They, at least one cop car at some point in the day is always parked on either side of that intersection, and they usually do get somebody there. I'm not sure if this is the proper avenue, but I'd love to figure out how to begin the process, speaking with somebody to see some safety improvements at that intersection as it is both a metro stop with two stops on either side of it for the MetroLink bus and adjacent to several homes that have children in them. And I'm sure everyone here is aware that street safety is very, very impactful for them. So I just wanted to bring my comments to the attention of the council today to let it be known that even us who've been living as renters in University City and now homeowners for a couple of years have noticed and just wanted to bring it to your attention because everyone loves to live on a straight, safe street, which ours feels like otherwise, one of the reasons that we stayed here. So thank you very much for hearing me out today, and I hope some improvements like this can happen to our city in the future.
Thank you for coming this evening. That concludes our public comments for the evening. Are there any council comments at this time? Hearing none. We have a public hearing on REZ 2402. I will open that public hearing at, apologize, got my phone back to 6:42. Madam Clerk, do we have any written comments for this public hearing prior to noon today?
There were none.
And no one, I believe, has signed up this, tonight to speak on us. So this hearing is now closed at 6:43. We also have a text, Text 2402 for Marcus at Olive. Public hearing will open at 6:43. Madam Clerk, did we have any written comments received by noon today?
There were none.
And I don't believe anyone has signed up to speak this evening, so the public hearing will conclude at 6:43 PM. Before you, you have the consent agenda items K1 through 7. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Hales. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Fuller. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Rose.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, at a prior council meeting, Mayor Protem Smothers then had raised a couple of questions, one regarding Metcalf Park as well as Buck Baseball Field. I would ask the Public Works Director Darren Gertler to provide you with an update on responses to those questions. Mr. Gertler?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having me up here this evening. As far as Metcalf backstops are, they are found to be stable. We discussed several things internally. If we were to ever change the use of the park back to baseball, that would be a, that would be a bonus since new backstops are running about $50,000 to $75,000 apiece. There's lots of potential for the park, and some have even mentioned possibly a, a good location for maybe a skate park. Jack Buck. That section between the new field and the old, or the new outfield fence and the old outfield fence has a potential for six, for two soccer fields in there. Either a 6v6 or a 9v9. It's available for any use. It's not restricted. It would be a good place to warm up for games for the, for the teams playing nearby. We will have the fence post straightened as needed on that, and and it will, it would act as a debris barrier should the river rise again. Thank you.
We're happy to respond to any questions that the council may have.
Mr. Smotherson.
Thank you, Mayor Crowe. Thank you, sir, for the update, but I do have, well, I guess I got several questions. Let me start with Metcalf Park. You've kind of contradicted yourself, and, and, and when I say that is that stability was never a question about the backstops. That was never a question about the backstops. And, and, and what I'm actually looking for is consistency because what the city has done, I'll give you a perfect example. During the flood in, in 22, in July of 22, one of the fields right next to the swimming pool was flooded along with this pool, meaning everything went straight down to the tennis courts. And so, again, the city did not go through parks, but the city and staff decided, and I guess council approved this, but that, that diamond that was right next to Heeman Pool was decided to leave that and let that overgrow, and then the backstop was taken down. So now you have a similar situation in Metcalf Park. And again, stability was never the question. You have a similar situation where you have a problem with the park. So I believe staff, and again, not going through the Parks Commission, decided to let that overgrow. So now you have a park that looks like it's been abandoned, and the reason it looks like that is because you have backstops, but no diamonds. And see, and again, and when I say you contradicted yourself in that, now you're talking about a skate park. So then what, why are the backstops still standing? I'm looking and trying to understand consistency. Because it doesn't, it makes us look like we really don't know what we're doing in reference to the conditions of our parks. So if that, I'll, I'll address that first, because again, stability wasn't the point. And now you're talking about a skate park. Okay, if that's the case, which is fine, take the backstops down like you did in Heeman Park. So that would be my question, sir.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem Smotherson, nothing has been decided regarding potential skate park. I think that any type of capital improvement of that nature is going to have extensive discussion with the Parks Commission as well as with the public and eventually with the mayor and council. So that, that has not, that's not been decided. I believe that the reason that director gave for not taking the backstops down is the cost associated with it if you ever decide to use it as a baseball softball field in the future. So we could certainly, you know, remove them, but there is a cost that you'll incur if we do so, if you decide to, for a different, or for a similar use that it has had in the past.
Again, consistency. You took the backstop down in Heeman Park.
Well, but with all due respect, if you take it down in one park because it was flooded and you have another park on Metcalf that's, the Metcalf Park that's not flooding.
No, it's a different reason. There's a different problem with that park. So now we've decided to let, to forego the baseball fields. So if we're doing the same thing, meaning there's an issue with the park, so now we're not, we're not, we're, we're, we're no longer, we don't longer have a baseball field. Why are we not removing the fence, backstops like we did in Heeman Park?
Well, let us do this. Well, certainly, I, I can't recall if this was discussed with the Parks Commission. It has been.
This specific issue about the backstops?
Yes.
It has.
And what was the Parks Commission recommendation?
Similar to what I reported.
So the Park Commission is recommending that they remain?
But they, but that was about stability. The question was never stability.
So we can take your information back to the Park Commission and let them know that and see if their recommendation to the council changes based upon the additional information. Is that acceptable?
Well, okay, but again, understanding that when the park in Heeman Park was removed and the backstop was taken down, that was never brought to the Parks Commission. So again, there's, there's no consistency in what action is being taken with similar situations. So, okay, and then, so I'll let you go ahead and make a decision about that and, and report back to the council. I can move forward if that's okay. The other question is about Heeman Park. So, and I guess this is a question for Mr. Rose. Did the council approve the decision to move the baseball diamond to Miller Park? That was a council decision, correct? Approval?
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem Smotherson, yes. The council agreed to the grant that was been, that's been received, and the council agreed to the placement of the baseball field in Miller Park. The reason for that is, as you may recall, has to do with the floodway that Jack Buck Field cannot be used in that capacity in the future because of the floodway that exists there in addition to it being in a flood zone. So that was the reason for the, for the change. And that occurred several years ago at this point because we wanted to ensure that the decision was made by the mayor and council prior to pursuing a grant for the, for the renovation of Miller Park Field.
Okay, if that's the case, and the council approved that, then why is the fence still up? Why is the baseball fence still up? Because again, and part of it is still damaged. And, and, and the reason that I am actually addressing this is because of the way that looks. And, and, and it doesn't make any sense that you, that somebody or staff member goes to a Parks Commission meeting and then is speculating about what could possibly done with something that's already been decided by the council to be removed. So that's why I'm asking, why is that fencing still up?
Mayor Protem Smotherson, you're referring to the fencing that remains at Jack Buck Field.
Yes, the baseball fencing. Because now you do have, you've completed, you have a softball field. Why is the Jack Buck fencing up for the baseball field? Why is it still up?
There are two reasons, as I understand it. One is that there are many residents that use that area as a dog run, as I understand it. And I believe there is an opportunity to potentially have soccer fields or practice fields in that area. So those are the two reasons that they remain. Will it will likely be modified? Probably so. But, but at this point, those are the uses.
So has the changes since the council decided, our council approved moving Jack Buck Field. Now that you have these changes, when did the council approve the changes?
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem Smotherson, what changes are you referencing?
A dog walk, soccer. When did, when did the council approve that? Because again, that's, again, we approved moving the field. So you have a scoreboard that sits out there in the middle of nowhere that actually should be moved. And again, we approved moving the field. The fencing is part of that approval.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem Smotherson, the actual use, whether they're, from a practical sense, using it as a soccer field or a practice field or a dog run, that, that has not been established by anyone. I'm simply indicating the kind of the uses that we see occurring there. I believe this issue was discussed with the Parks Commission as well, and it was their recommendation that the fencing remain.
I don't ever remember that coming to council.
Well.
Never remember that coming to council.
If council would like for me to direct staff to remove it, I can certainly do that.
But isn't that part of the approval that we've already given?
No.
How is it not? It's a base, it's part of the baseball field.
The council has never directed that that fencing be removed.
But I'm trying to understand, how did the fencing become a separate issue? Because it was, we are moving the baseball field. The fencing is part of the baseball field.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem Smotherson, the, the baseball field is a separate project that has gone to Miller Park at this point. There was really no direction regarding the potential other than modifying that Jack Buck Field so that it could still be used for baseball, softball, just not at the same level, for example, for high school students. Outside of that, there was no direction from the council regarding the excess property that existed, what that property would be used for. Now, if the council would like to give that direction, we can certainly take those actions at this point, but that would be inconsistent with what I would recommend occur as well as what the Art Commission is recommended.
But again, that recommendation has never come to council, so I, I don't understand. I don't know. And again, when you say inconsistent with the approval that the council gave because specifically there was never a separation about that fencing or the baseball field. The fencing was, as far as I understand, was part of the baseball field.
Yep.
That's what it's for.
Mayor Protem Smotherson, if there are four of you that would like for us to remove all the fencing, we're, we're happy to do that.
Okay, I will have to then bring this up at another council meeting and, and see if I can make that happen.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. McMahon.
Thank you, Mayor Crowe, as the liaison to the Parks Commission, just to, to maybe just note what I was there at the meeting and so on heard. If there was an inconsistency with a prior backstop, and it didn't come before council, this, this time, that error is not being replicated. Where it's gone to the Parks Commission, both the Jack Buck Field issue and Metcalf Park issues, and they've, they've discussed it. And the point that they were, I think, were really making is that they didn't want to make a recommendation to remove a structure without a plan of what they wanted to do next. That was really all it was, that there were opportunities in both places, and without an exact plan, they said, well, let's hold off. One of the recommendations was, let's, let's, one, let's check to see if the backstops are structurally sound, because then it's really easy to say they should be removed. It's not that that was the issue that was raised here, but the Parks Commissioners said, you know what, let's check on that, because if they are falling down already, it makes it, makes it, makes our decision process a lot easier. So that's why they recommended that. They wanted to know, before removing a city asset, what the condition of that asset was. And so that's when the folks at staff went out and looked at it, and now have come back to report to us that they are sound. They're not in trouble of falling over, but they wanted to come up with and say, let's, what's our plan for the use of that park before we make a structural change that could be in the tens of thousands of dollars? And the same thing with the, the fence over at Heeman Park. I don't believe we ever voted to, what we voted for was to build a, a ball field in Miller. We didn't vote to move anything. We voted to have a new project. We voted to build a ball field. We didn't vote to move anything. So that would be a separate motion and a separate discussion if we need to do that. But again, at the Parks Commission meeting, it was basically a situation where there is an opportunity for multiple uses that the Parks Commission didn't rule on yet or, or wade through. And so they said, let's make it structurally sound, fix it, repair it, get it in shape, leave it be so we can have further discussions. That's where they, that's where they were on that. And so that was their reasonable approach that they wanted to take. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Well, if, if there be no one else, I, the last thing that I will say to that comment is that if if there be no one else, I the last thing that I will say to that comment is that what I what I find frustrating is, and 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 I'm probably one of only the only person on this council that has the experiences and care to the extent that I do about the parks, because I have had deep experiences in these parks and have a utmost respect for what our parks are and how they serve the residents. But the the issue that I have is this, if that's the case, then why haven't we in two years fixed that one end of the fence? I mean, again, there's it's still it's still damaged and it's still sitting there damaged. We just recently had the Cardinals RBI League do a pitch, throw and run event here. So you have people outside of U City coming to U City and looking at this. You have a batting cage that's been damaged by the flood, and it's still sitting there in a in a pile right next to the fence, and this has been two years. That's the thing that I don't really understand, that what we are not taking care of is those issues. If we're going to keep the fence, fix the fence. If we're going to keep that situation, get rid of the batting cage that's sitting there in a pile next to the field. And so and that's the thing that I'm really concerned about is that, you know, we've got a big event coming Saturday with all of the U City alumni scheduled to come here. And here it is that they're going to see this. These are people that don't, they've come from out of town, come from all over the state. And and this is what they get to see. So again, I'll leave it at that, and hopefully those things can be taken care of. Thank you.
Mr. Rose.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, this next item, I request your consideration of adding $5,000 to the Arts and Letters Budget for the Starlight Concert Series. This item was requested by Mayor Pro Tim Smothers and seconded by Councilmember Teeman.
Gentlemen, Mr. Smothers.
Yes, sir. I'll I'll open up with this and and let you know that what's happened with the in the Arts and Letters Commission, and I'm a former commissioner, I mean, a council liaison for the Arts and Letters Commission. And one of the things that I I really wanted to bring attention to is the fact that the the one committee on arts and letters is the Starlight Concerts, and a Starlight Concert Committee is the only committee that really has to deal with inflation. And they have not asked or had any raises in reference to that committee in years. And I absolutely tell you that. So what they've run into is the inflated cost of sound and the inflated cost that the bands are now asking for as as we hire bands for each event. Because University City doesn't have a standardized place to do concerts, we have to bring in the concert shell, and we have to hire sound for each event. And one of the things I will say is that we do a very, very, we do a great job at the sound company that's hired and the cons and the bands that we have performing on that stage. We probably have one of the best concert series that we in this city. And I can tell you because I've played in pretty much every venue and every park in this city my entire life. We have one of the best concert series. That's why we have the attendance that we have at these concert series. And you're literally talking about four, five, 600 people that attend these concerts, and they look forward to these concerts every year. So the problem that the Starlight Concerts have series has run into, the media has run into, is that they had to borrow from borrow from the next concert dates, meaning that they had to go into the next budget year to borrow to complete concerts last year. So now they have a deficit of $5,000, and that deficit may cause that series to not be able to complete the concerts in September of this year, which is next month, and also, and the reason for this request is to also stabilize the series so that they can complete the six concerts they have scheduled for next year. And that's the reason we're asking, I'm asking for that $5,000 budget amendment item to be added. And I'll let Mr. Teeman talk.
So you, Mr. Smothers, I believe you just made a motion to add $5,000 to the Arts and Letters Concert, Starlight Concert Series. Am I correct?
Yes, sir, I am.
And you made it, and you're a second.
Honorable Mayor, I second that motion.
Any other comments you'd like?
I simply want to reinforce, again, as former president of the commission and now as the council liaison to that commission, the things that the Honorable Mayor Pro Tim Smothers has said. It's really, in some ways, a simple ask. There's been a lot of inflation. We need a little more money. And and it's also, you're, I would would reinforce what he said. This is kind of one of our hallmark events of U City, the summer concert. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, I believe we have one request to speak. Mr. Williams, I kind of jumped the gun there a little bit earlier. Come on up if you'd like to speak. You'll need to push the button at the bottom of the microphone and then name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Larry Williams. I live at 7939 Westover Place in University City. Excuse me. I'll just kind of coat tag on on our councilman here. We have a vibrant city here. We a diverse population. The Arts and Letters Commission, we have five committees on, and I am part of the Starlight Starlight Committee, or the Committee. And yes, the costs have gone up for for sound, for example. We try to get professional sound out there. You, for the artists, they want, they want to hear, they want, they want good clarity for the microphones, very good clarity from also from our speakers as well. So for example, the sound for the past seven years has gone from $700 per event up to now $1,300 per event. Including our talent, they've increased their small increments about 10% every year for the past seven years. So so some bands, we can get them for $900, some we have to pay up to $1,500 to $2,000. So and again, that's where the inflationary costs come in, as Mr. Smothers has mentioned. And then, of course, then, of course, with advertising, advertising, we put out banners, flyers, as well as yard signs. Again, that's increased slowly over the past seven years as well, from again, from $900 up to about $1,300 again, per for the for the entire event. So the $5,000, so we've had to cut back on our concerts this year. So that was part of, as it was saying, how we're Robin Peter, Pay Paul. We normally would have like six or eight concerts, six concerts in June. And sorry, four in June and then two more in July, and then start another four in in September, where we've cut that back substantially so we could so we could save, minus we could pay the band, sound people, and everyone else. So so September concerts, we're only having two concerts this time. On calendar, you'll see more, but we're only having two concerts in September. And in June, we're planning to have at least four. That depends upon any type of increase we might have through through the council. So I appreciate your opportunity for me to speak before you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And we, you got, you have a motion and a second. I don't think you need, I think the votes are probably there, but you can you can keep talking if you want to. I mean, I think I can watch the faces. I, you know, sometimes, you know, sometimes silence is a good thing there. There's a motion and a second. Is there any for, oh, Mr. McMahon?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood. So the the 5,000 would cover the September and then into June. So it covers basically this this fiscal year. And then so by the time we get to February, January, then we could work this into a budget
Yep.
so that we could get the commission, get that Starlight Series as a budget process regularly, so we don't have another emergency kind of, and I'm not saying the emergency, but you know what I mean? But that's, I just want to make sure I got the the timing of how that would work. So then by the time we roll around the next fiscal budget, we can work this on a more permanent basis. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Because most second, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We'll now move forward to unfinished business. We have bill number 9548. Madam Clerk, may we have the second reading?
Bill 9548, an ordinance amending section 400.070 of the Municipal Code of the City of University City, Missouri, relating to the official zoning map by amending said map so as to change the classification of property known as Lot 4 of Market at Olive Platte 6 from Plan Development Commercial District PDC, PD dash C, I'm sorry, to Plan Development Commercial District PD dash C and repealing ordinance number 7222.
May we have the third reading?
Bill 9548, an ordinance amending section 400.070 of the Municipal Code of the City of University City, Missouri, relating to the official zoning map by amending said map so as to change the classification of property known as Lot 4 of Market at Olive Platte 6 from Plan Development Commercial District PD dash C to Plan Development Commercial District PD dash C and repealing ordinance number 7222.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. McMahon is there second, seconded by Mr. Smothers. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Councilmember Hales.
Aye.
Councilmember Fuller.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Smothers.
Aye.
Councilmember Teeman.
Aye.
Mayor Crowe.
Aye, the bill has passed. We now have bill number 9549. May we have the second reading?
Bill 9549, an ordinance amending zoning code section 400.2730 of the University City Municipal Code relating to standards for motor vehicle orientated businesses by making the standards inapplicable to developments along Olive Boulevard between Interstate 170 and McKnight McKnight Road or Woodson Dimensional Inn Road and amending section 400.780 of said code relating to density and regulations and performance standards in planned development districts PD by correcting the references in subsections A4 and A5 to sections 400.270, I'm sorry, 402730 and 400.2710 of said code respectively.
Thank you very much. I hate to do this to you, but can we have the third reading?
Bill 9549, an ordinance amending zoning code section 400.2730 of the University City Municipal Code relating to standards for motor vehicle orientated businesses by making the standards inapplicable to developments along Olive Boulevard between Interstate 170 and McKnight Road or Woodson Dimensional Dimensional Inn Road and amending section 400.780 of said code relating to density and regulations and performance standards in planned development districts PD by correcting the references in subsections A4 and A5 to sections 400.2730 and 400.2710 of said code respectively.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Smothers and seconded by Mr. Fuller. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hales.
Aye.
Councilmember Fuller.
Aye.
Councilmember Smothers.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Teeman.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Mayor Crowe.
Aye, the bill has passed. We now have bill number 9550, and as you know, we had a discussion at our last meeting regarding an amendment that we needed to make to bill number 9550 before we have the second and third reading. So I would welcome a motion to a bill, motion to amend bill number 9550 to change the date in the fourth whereas clause from May 9, 2024 to July 3, 2024, the date of the revised site development plan and to replace Exhibit A in bill number 9550, as was introduced with Exhibit A in amended bill number 9550 in the August 12, 2024 city council packet. Is there such a motion to be made? Motion made by Mr. Hales. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Teeman. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Would you please, let's see, could we have the second reading of bill number 9550 as amended? Am I saying that correctly, Madam Clerk? No.
Vote on the amendment.
I need to vote the, I apologize. Thank, gosh, I'm I'm getting rusty up here. I apologize. We have amendment before us that Mr. Hales made, and I think Mr. Teeman seconded. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? I'm sorry? It is? Man, I am, I think I need to go home tonight. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Now you have bill number 9550. May we have the second reading of it as amended?
Bill 9550, an ordinance approving a final development plan for Lot 4 of the Market at Olive Development Platte 6 and repealing ordinance number 7225.
We have the third reading.
Bill 9550, an ordinance approving a final development plan for Lot 4 of the Market at Olive Development Platte 6 and repealing ordinance number 7225.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Teeman, seconded by Mr. McMahon. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fuller.
Aye.
Councilmember Smothers. Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Teeman.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Councilmember Hales.
Aye.
Mayor Crowe.
Aye, the bill has passed. Bill number 9551, may we have the second reading?
Bill 9551, an ordinance authorizing the City of University City to enter into it and execute a contract with St. Louis County, Missouri, for vector control services and authorizing and directing the city manager of University City to enter into into on behalf of said city, a contract with St. Louis County, Missouri, for vector control services.
We have the third reading.
Bill 9551, an ordinance authorizing the City of University City to enter enter into and execute a contract with St. Louis County, Missouri, for vector control services and authorizing and directing the city manager of University City to enter into on behalf of said city, a contract with St. Louis County, Missouri, for vector control services.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Fuller. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Smothers. Councilmember Clay. Councilmember Teeman.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Councilmember Hales.
Aye.
Councilmember Fuller.
Aye.
Mayor Crowe.
Aye. The bill has passed. We'll now move forward to new business, Resolution 2024-10, Establishment of a Solid Waste and Recycling Rate Study Task Force. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Teeman. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hales. Is there discussion regarding the establishment of the Solid Waste Recycling Rate Study Task Force? Mr. Clay. You went off your, thank.
I don't know why I did that. Questions about the the composition and the process of in paneling the task force? I guess to the city manager.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Clay, what is proposed is a seven-member task force. The council members would appoint one member each, and the mayor would appoint the chair for the task force.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. You now have a four-year resolution, 2024-11, Preliminary Development Plan for Market at Olive Platte 6, Lot 4, U City LLC 7 Brew. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Fuller. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hales. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We now go to council reports and business. Anything in this section from any members of council for council reports and business? Hearing none. We have no further requests to speak, I believe, Madam Clerk. Are there council comments this evening? Mr. McMahon.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank everybody for voting last week in the primary and congratulate Jeff Hales on his primary victory for the 86th district.
Mr. Clay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Crowe, and again, congratulations, Councilmember Hales. Wanted to acknowledge last week's Back to School Festival and National Night Out Event at Jackson Park. Believe that was Thursday, perhaps? But last week, a great event. Appreciate U City Police Department being there, serving hot dogs and and truly integrating into the community. That was great to see. And and again, as it's been in past years, a great event. So thank you to all those involved, our school district partners especially.
Mr. Rose.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, include are placed on your desk tonight was the approved FY 2025 Annual Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program. So I just wanted to make note of that for the record.
Thank you very much. I'd like to join in congratulating Mr. Hales as well, and I'd also like to call out Captain Dana Morley, Chief Hampton, now we're at the And I'd also like to call out Captain Dana Morley, Chief Hampton. Now we're at the, uh, high school today for the welcoming of all of our, uh, uh, district staff, and it was nice to see the superintendent call out the, uh, Police Department of University City, in particular Captain Morley, for the relationship that she has developed with the, uh, school district, the students and all the faculty. So it's always nice to get a little bit of recognition. So thank you to all of our public safety folks and of course for all of our staff for what you do every single week. With that, uh, we do not have an executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Mr. Hales. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Teeman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.